Opposed? And in, under bid openings and awards, number five is a resolution receiving bids for foundation, mechanical, and plumbing for slides at the municipal pool. Kim?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you remember, we had given this contract to USA Aquatics to get us everybody we needed in line to put these two slides up. So they did receive two bids to put the foundation that we needed and the pump and those kinds of things for the slide. And so it's a company, Global Specialty, from what I understand, is a company that does a lot of these slides with USA Aquatics or other aquatic spots. And they also got a contract from Michael Murphy Construction, but it didn't include a lot of things that we needed. The Global Specialty comes with the package except for the electrical. So after talking to Paul Schaefer with USA Aquatics, he recommended that we go with Global. He was really pleased at their numbers. It's within our budget that we have, and so that would be the Park Board's recommendation as well. We took it there on the seventh and discussed it.
Council, any input, comments? If not, we need a resolution either approving or not approving. We move the resolution to approve.
Is there a second?
Tom?
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number six is a resolution. It's under public hearing, under public hearings. Number six is a resolution. It's a public hearing on street improvements on Nineteenth Street Northeast, Oakland Avenue East to Eighth Avenue Northeast, project one eight one zero two. Stephen?
The next four items on the agenda are all related to our street reconstruction projects. And prior to tonight's meeting, we had an informational meeting with the public last week. We have that at the Austin Public Library on Tuesday. Give anyone that was, wanted to attend, we give them the same presentation that we're going to give to everyone tonight. But we wanted to provide it in a more informal atmosphere, try and take input from residents. And just to give you a little bit of idea, the four projects that we are going to talk about tonight, working with the Clerk's office, we have sent out 224 notices to the property owners of pending assessments. And at that informal meeting that we had last week, we had 21 people representing different properties on the projects. So 21 of the 224 came to our meeting last week. And Mitch Wernan is here tonight, our Assistant City Engineer. He's going to speak on these four projects, give a little PowerPoint presentation on each one, and then answer any questions and take any information from the public as well. So now I'll turn it over to Mitch.
Hello, Mayor and Council. We'll get started with Nineteenth Street Northeast Project. So this project's going to be from Oakland Avenue to the frontage road just south of I-90. If you can see on the map here, Oakland is down here, and the front road is on the north end. We'll start with some pictures of the existing conditions. You can see there's cracked pavement, patches in the intersections, and around the manholes, and this continues on throughout the street. What we're looking to do, what we're looking to do with this project is remove the existing curb and gutter and concrete pavement, and narrow the street from 44 feet to 40 feet wide. And right now, we're kind of weighing the option of replacing the road with concrete or asphalt. Asphalt will give us a lower price, but the concrete is more expensive, but maybe lasts a little longer, so we're still weighing those options on which route we're going to take. There'll be parking lanes on both sides of the street, as it are currently, and then we'll do a lot of sidewalk and pedestrian ramp improvements with the project, making pedestrian ramps ADA accessible, and then restoring boulevards, entrance walks, and driveways at the end. Underground, we'll be looking at replacing sanitary sewer, some spot repairs on the sanitary sewer, as well as lining the sanitary sewer. And then for storm sewer improvements, we'll be replacing all the storm mains, laterals, and catch basins to help improve the above ground drainage. And then we will also have a tile line that will help with the subsurface drainage. And with that tile line, people can also tie their sump pumps into that to help alleviate some of the groundwater issues in the area. Austin Utilities will also have some work on the project, they'll be replacing the water main throughout the project and working on some future electrical crossings. Here's just a picture of what the new cross section will look like. We'll have two driving lanes and two parking lanes with the existing sidewalk remaining in place throughout the project. Our proposed schedule, we're looking to start this project right away in the spring, early to mid-May, depending on when weather allows us to. And we're anticipating the project to take roughly four and a half months. And this project is a little unique because the residents east of Nineteenth Street don't have access off of 218. There's a one-way frontage road in that area, so we're going to have temporary gravel crossings at each intersection in the project. You can hear me better now. We'll have temporary gravel crossings at each intersection to help people who live on the east side get to their houses, who aren't directly impacted by the project, but will have difficulty getting to their house if we did not have these gravel crossings in place. And here, we'll go through a few more of the project impacts. Residents won't have access to their driveways throughout construction. They'll be required to park on adjacent streets if they have any boats or RVs, anything else like that, in their driveway or garage, they'll have to move that prior to construction. We can create handicap parking spaces for those who require them and get them parking spots as close to their house as possible. And then garbage and recycling will be made on adjacent streets. Some of the benefits of the project would be the improved ride and safety, improved drainage, the street will just be more visually appealing. As far as underground utilities, we'll have increased lifespan of those utilities, as well as decreased maintenance costs. And another big one would be handicap ramp improvements, giving people better access to sidewalks and making it safer for those with disabilities. Project costs, this project is estimated cost $1.7 million. It'll be funded by assessments, municipal state aid funds, stormwater utility funds, and wastewater treatment funds. And just to give you an idea of the amount that we are assessing on this project, it's roughly 10%. I don't know the exact number of residents that we're assessing on this project, but the total is $170,000.
Are these costs for the entire project, all four of them?
This is just the Nineteenth Street project. And these are estimated costs. We haven't put this out to bid yet, so we don't know what the actual cost will be yet. This is likely a high number, but it could be lower. So the assessment rate that we set back in January is $45.25 per linear foot of frontage. So for example, a house with 50 feet of frontage is $2,262.50. We do have some unique situations with corn lots. We assess the average of the two frontages. And then you can see the sidewalk rates that we have, $5.25 for four-inch sidewalk and $7 per square foot for six-inch sidewalk, which is through driveways, just so it doesn't break with vehicle traffic going in and out of their garage. So the assessment payment options, we send bills for the assessments in late August or early September, and residents have three ways to pay them. They can pay the amount in full by October 31st with no interest. They can pay at least 50% of the amount by October 31st. And then the remainder would be applied to their property taxes over a 15-year period with a 4.75% interest rate. The third option would be to not pay anything prior to October 31st, and then the entire balance we apply to their property taxes over that same 15-year period with the same 4.75% interest rate. And then we do have a financial assistance program for those over 65 and financially qualify and live on the property. They can apply to defer the interest until they sell the property, but that would still require the 4.75% interest rate. And we're going to try and keep people updated as much as possible on the projects this year. We're going to try a couple of new things, having some links on our city construction website, as well as doing some occasional Facebook posts, just to keep people informed of what's going on. And then the important things that everyone needs to know, we'll hand out flyers door to door when that time comes. That's all I've got for this project. Any questions?
I do have a question. On a financial assistance that they had to be over 65, and there's income requirements also?
Yes, and I don't know what those are, Tom. You might have a-
Number changes.
Nearly based on some HUD requirements. So low to moderate income, we just get numbers from Moore County, from the HRA, so it's based on your income level also that you can qualify, but you also have to be living in the house, so like rental property.
No rental properties. Okay.
Mitch, one question. When you say flyers door to door, so when you don't know when the start of the project's going to be, based on weather, then those flyers include a notification that it's going to start like Monday or something, so they'll get things out, like if they had a boat or an RV?
Yeah, we try to let people know a week in advance of when we'll start. And then if there's anything, like we might impact a certain block, we'll try and let those people know when we know.
I have a question too. Now you say the financial assistance isn't available for rental properties. What about the other things? Do they have to pay upfront, or can they put it on the 20-year thing also?
I believe the 15-year payment is for all properties.
If you do nothing, it'll just go to your taxes, and the county will spread it over 15 years.
Whether it's rental or occupied.
Correct. That's correct, yep.
Why are we narrowing the street?
Who'd I say? Sorry. Because we recently did, what year is that, Stephen? Like 2012, before I was here? We narrowed Nineteenth Street south of Oakland.
Okay. Did you?
So we're just matching into that existing width, and Nineteenth Street's a state aid road, so there's requirements as far as parking lane width and driving lane width, and we are meeting those requirements. It's just decreasing the cost of the project. It's not a really high-traffic road, so there's no need to have it 44 feet wide.
Thank you. Okay, now you're handling all four of these at once, a questions for all four of them, right?
This is probably more for Nineteenth Street, so we can do one at a time.
Do we have any more questions on number five, or number six, the Nineteenth Street project?
There's some.
It's a public hearing. Does anybody here want to speak to the council on it? Okay. If not, we need a resolution ordering improvement, approving plans, and specifications, and ordering advertising for bids.
Move the resolution.
Is there a second? Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
All right, seven. Public hearing, it's a resolution, it's a public hearing on street improvements on Fifth Street Northwest, Eighth Avenue Northwest to 12th Avenue Northwest, and 12th Avenue Northwest, Fifth Street Northwest to 10th Street Northwest, project one eight one zero three. Mitch, you're up again.
Okay, this project is Fifth Street Northwest from Eighth Avenue to 12th Avenue, and 12th Avenue Northwest from Fifth Street to 10th Street. And here's a map, another map of the project. You can see it's nine blocks, so it's a fairly large project. So the existing conditions, we've got, these two roads are asphalt, and you can see the pavement's deteriorating in many areas, a lot of cracking and potholes, and a lot of sections missing curb and gutter, as you can see in this area.
It doesn't have much stuff, I think it shouldn't be done.
So what we'll be looking to do on this project is remove and replace the existing curb and gutter and asphalt pavement. We plan to widen Fifth Street from 30 feet wide to 32 feet wide, just to make the parking a little easier for the residents, as well as snow maintenance, things like that. 12th Avenue, we're going to keep at 30 feet wide, just because it's a very narrow right of way there, and in order to widen the roadway, we'd have to take out a lot of trees, which we don't want to do. We'll also replace the pedestrian ramps and fix any deficient sidewalk panels, and then restore driveways and boulevards. Underground work, we'll be replacing the storm sewer and catch basins to help with the surface drainage again, installing that same tile line that we're going to install on Nineteenth Street, that people can tie their sump pump lines into, as well as replace some sanitary sewer mains. We have a lot of old infrastructure in this neighborhood, so we're replacing some of the mains there, and then the mains that we do not replace, we will be lining with a plastic liner. Austin Utilities also will be replacing water main in this project as well, and doing some underground electrical work. This project, we're looking at completing in two phases. The first phase would be Fifth Street, which is in yellow on the picture, and the second phase would be 12th Avenue, which is in red. Overall, we expect the project to last most of the summer, starting the work in mid-May and going into October likely. And doing Fifth Street, the reason we won't do all these streets at once is just it's a lot of area to tear up at one time, and it would be inconvenient for residents who live close to the intersection of Fifth and 12th. And we also create some gravel crossings at Eighth Street and Fifth Street off of 12th Avenue to help traffic get through these areas. So we're on the same project impacts as the other projects, Nineteenth Street. So I'm not going to go through each of these slides, because it's a lot of repeat information, unless you guys want me to. So I'll just breeze through it quick, if you want me to stop at any point. Just let me know.
I'm just curious, when you say provide service connections to tile line for sump pump connections, then is that an additional cost then?
No, no additional cost. That'd just be included in the project assessment, yeah. So what we do is we provide a two-inch pipe that we stub into the boulevard, that people who have a sump pump then can, from their house, dig that line in and tie it in.
So the expense to them is to go from their house to that?
Yes. So we would only provide the stub into the boulevard. They would be responsible for bringing that line to their house.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
A lot of same benefits on this project as Nineteenth Street. Estimated project cost for this is $1.125 million. This is, these streets are not state aid streets, so this would just be funded with assessments, local street fund, stormwater utility funds, and wastewater treatment fund. And I believe this is our largest project in terms of residents impacted, and you can see that we are, assessment revenue is going to be $233,000 roughly. Same set of assessment rates for this project as everywhere else in town, so we don't need to go through this again, unless you want me to.
No.
And the same payment options, you can either pay it forward or have it applied to your property taxes over 15 years.
Okay. Is that it?
Yep.
Council, any questions? Comments?
Mitch, you mentioned utility falls. Is Austin Utilities going any, moving from overhead to underground on some of the projects?
I know they're considering it. I haven't got the final word from them on whether they plan to do that or not, but I should be hearing that in the next week or so.
Okay. Public hearing, is there anybody in the audience that came here to talk about this project? If not, we need a resolution ordering improvement, approving plans, and specifications, and ordering advertisement for bids on number seven.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number eight is a resolution. A resolution, it's a public hearing on street improvements on 14th Avenue Southwest, Fourth Street Southwest to Eighth Street Southwest, and 15th Avenue Southwest, Fourth Street to Sixth Street Southwest, project one eight one zero four.
Okay, this project is 14th Avenue Southwest from Fourth to Eighth, Fourth Street to Eighth Street, and 15th Avenue from Fourth Street to Sixth Street. I believe the mayor lives on this house, or on the street.
The mayor does live on his street. The last picture is looking west on 15th Avenue, that's my wife's car.
Okay.
And you can tell there's not a patch on that street. None. That's not like the other streets you looked at. You take care of our street good here. But I'm assuming you're going to do it anyway, so I'll-
We are, yes.
(laughing).
As you can see, there are some deficiencies on the streets, so that's why we are-
My wife doesn't see them, I guarantee you that.
So, problems, cracked curbs, ponding water in the streets, as well as some underground utility issues. That's what drives a lot of these projects.
Mitch, I would have a question for you.
Yes.
Now, I mean, I joke, and I know we're on a schedule and stuff, but the point I try and make with my wife and the neighbors is, we're redoing the sewers also. Now how much, if you were to put 60/40 as far as the sewers, I mean, are they in dire need of repair, or, I mean, that's the reason we do this more than anything, is the sewage, right?
Yeah, actually, on this project, sewers are fairly decent.
Okay.
But in a lot of other projects, that might be a bigger concern, whether we have collapsed pipes or cracked pipes or-
So what do we do with the sewage, say, on my avenue? We just inspect it?
Yeah, prior to each project, in the summer, we have our sewer department take their camera down all the lines, and I get to sit and watch all those videos and look for bad spots in the line.
Hey, can I watch the video on my, so if there's nothing wrong with the plumbing? See where I'm going here, don't I? All right, that's fine.
There are issues that we need to take care of on your street, so-
You know what? We had two councilmembers that had their streets last year, done last year, and I've made more noise already than they did all year, so I'll be quiet.
So, with this project, we are going to remove and replace the existing pavement, and we are also considering an option to spot repair the curb rather than replace the entire curb, just because some of it's in pretty good shape, but some of it's in really bad shape, so we're still analyzing that, as well as fixing up pet ramps and sidewalks and replacing all the end drives. Underground work, there's some storm sewer work that mainly will take place on 14th Avenue, and we plan to install the same tile line that we are installing on all the other projects. We will be lining all the sewers, sanitary sewers in this area, and Austin Utilities does have water main work on the entire street. So that'd be another thing to consider with the underground work. It's not just our underground utilities, Austin Utilities has water main that needs to be replaced and is aging as well.
Is that it?
Not quite.
Okay.
We're looking to start this project in July. It's one of our midsummer projects that we'll be starting. This one, we're expecting to take roughly three and a half months.
Three and a half months? Okay.
So actually, this is one of the shorter projects there.
I can see.
And to help with parking for those residents on the west end of 15th Avenue, we'll install a gravel crossing across 14th Avenue at Sixth Street to help those people get to their houses a little easier.
Watch, I could do that again?
We'll have a gravel crossing at Sixth Street and 14th Avenue.
Yeah. And also, there's a park down at the end of my, not a park, it's, what would you call it? It used to be where the ma-
Flood property.
It's flood property, it's grass, and I've already talked to Stephen, it's okay if people park. If there's not a spot on the road, they can pull up on the lawn, as long as they're careful, and don't do it when it's soaking wet, things like that. So if there is an issue there, they can just park there.
Yep.
Thank you, Stephen, for that.
Again, same project impacts, same benefits. This project, we're looking at roughly $715,000. Again, this is a local project funded by assessments, local street funds, storm sewer, utility fund, wastewater treatment fund, and our assessment revenue is $155,000 on this project.
And I apologize, I am fully in support of you doing our street. I'm just trying to bring a little levity to it and let people know that, you know, our streets get done too, you know, and like I said, Jeff and Laura had theirs done last year, and that was a real mess, I mean, northwest there, so I hope you don't have to-
Yeah.
It's your fault. It's just all the rain.
I don't wish on a partner at all, man.
Yeah. It was all the rain. I mean, we had so much rain last year, it just created havoc.
We understand it's a major inconvenience to everyone that's on these street projects. We try and make them as quick as possible, and we try and do what we can to make that-
We're fine. I'm fine with it. Okay, so is there any questions from the council? Comments? It's a public hearing. Is there anybody here that agrees with me? (laughing) Anybody here that wants to make statements? If not, we need a resolution for item number eight. Resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications, ordering advertisement for bids on this. Need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember Harry.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. And finally, number nine is a public hearing on street improvements on Fifth Street Southeast, 13th Avenue Southeast to the dead end, Seventh Street Southeast, 13th Avenue Southeast to 16th Avenue Southeast, Eighth Drive Southeast, 15th Avenue Southeast to 16th Avenue Southeast, and 15th Avenue Southeast, Sixth Street to Eighth Drive Southeast, project one eight one zero six. Mitch?
I'm not going to repeat it all right, because it's a map, so I'm just looking at the map. So here we are, this, because Woodsen School area, we did a project last year on Sixth Street and 16th Avenue, as kind of phase one of the project, and phase two will be the streets shown here. Again, some existing pictures, a lot of potholes, cracked pavement, deficient curb, and on this picture, you can see some of the pedestrian ramps that we're going to be taking care of are, you know, these pet ramps don't even go to the roadway, so that's another thing that drives a lot of these projects too. This project, we're going to be milling and overlaying Fifth Street, so that'd be the one block dead end, just grinding off the top inch and a half of pavement and replacing it with a new layer of pavement, as well as replacing the curb and gutter and asphalt pavement on Seventh Street. And we're going to realign Seventh Street a little bit to make the intersection a little safer and more convenient for residents. We're going to replace the asphalt on Eighth Drive Southeast, and then install new curb and gutter, which doesn't exist, on 15th Avenue, as well as upgrade pet ramps, sidewalk panels, driveways, and boulevards. Underground, we'll have some storm sewer to extend, and install new catch basins. Sanitary sewer, we will be replacing one block on 15th Avenue, west of, or east of Seventh Street, excuse me, and then the remainder would be lined. We also install a tile line for those sump pump connections. This area is very wet, so there's a lot of sump pumps that are running all the time, so this will help those people out. And then Austin Utilities has water and electric work on this project as well. So here's just a little drawing of the proposed realignment of Seventh Street. On the left, you can see how it kind of angles to the west, just before it gets to the intersection. And what we're going to do is just run that street straight to tee into the intersection a little nicer. We worked with the property owner on the east side of the road to acquire some property to make that alignment a little straighter. This project is also going to be a two-phase project that we're looking to start in late May or early June. The first phase will be 15th Avenue and Eighth Drive in yellow on the picture, and then the second phase will be Fifth Street and Seventh Street in red. And overall, this is looking to be a four and a half month project. Same project impacts as other projects, same benefits. Overall cost is $895,000, funded by assessments and local streets, and then our assessment revenue is $154,000.
I guess it was going to take four and a half months?
Roughly, yes.
Is that it?
I believe. There are a couple of different assessment rates that are involved with this project. For milling overlay streets, where we're, the only thing we're doing is removing the top layer of asphalt and then replacing it- top layer of asphalt and then replacing it with a new layer, we have a different assessment rate at $17 per foot. And then in areas where we're adding curb and gutter, where it currently doesn't exist, we assess for that, which is $15 per foot, and that curb assessment is only applied the first-ever installation of curb. So where there's curb currently, you're not being charged as an additional curb assessment. I believe that's it.
Counsel, any input, comments? Public hearing, is there anybody here that came to address this issue with us? If not, we need a resolution ordering improvement, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danker.
Councilmember Haley.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under petitions and requests, number 10 is a resolution setting a public hearing from March 19th, 2018, for street improvement, project assessments, we need a resolution.
So, second.
Mr. Danker.
Councilmember Haley.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 12 is on 11 is a resolution approving a contract with the Austin Bruins. Ms. Underwood.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At our last work session, we discussed the contract, and I believe it was moved forward to come to this meeting, and I would like you to approve the contract the way we discussed it at the work session.
Counsel? If counsel has no input, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danker.
Councilmember Haley.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. And we have three stops signed requests. A is Eighteenth Drive and First Avenue, well, Stephen, do you wanna handle all three of them? We'll do the, this afterwards.
Yep, just thinking, you're saying that all three of them are either resident or requested by the school district, they are adjacent to, for the most part, school facilities, and their locations, as you were describing, are Eighteenth Drive and First Avenue Southeast, right by the tennis courts, by Neville. Our second location is Eighteenth Street and Second Avenue Northwest, by the new Oak Cloud School, and the third location is Second Avenue and 14th Street Northwest, Service Road near Athletic Field.
Counsel, do you have any questions on any of these three? If not, we need a motion for Eighteenth Drive and First Avenue Southeast. So, second. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 19th Street and Second Avenue Northwest?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And finally, Second Avenue and 14th Street Northwest?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 13 is, looks like an ordinance reviewing a critical water usage ordinance. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor members. Austin Utilities has requested the city adopt an ordinance relating to water restrictions. This has come to us through Austin Utilities, and this is to be in compliance with Minnesota statutes. Mr. Nybauer presented it at the work session. Any other questions, Counsel, that I have, we're concerned to answer, but otherwise we need approval of the ordinance.
Counsel, do you have any questions on this ordinance before we go forward? If not, we need an ordinance for preparation of the ordinance.
Move that the ordinance be prepared.
It's a motion, is there a second?
Yes.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance is for adoption and publication of the ordinance?
Move for adoption and publication of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danker.
Councilmember Haley.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Thank you. 14 is setting the board an appeals and equalization meeting for May 4, 2018, at 10:00 a.m., and appointing the following individuals to the board. I'd like to do this all at once, if anybody has any objections. Dennis Schminky, Ward 1 representative, Taggart Metgarden, Second Ward representative, Arianna Hinks, Third Ward representative, and Peter Grover Atlard representative. Do we have any questions on any of these, any comments? If not, we'll take off a motion for all four?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. 15 is a motion approving the 218 electronics recycling, Stephen, tell us about the event.
So I have been conducting electronics recycling events since 2000, probably in conjunction with Moore County. Again, this year, we're looking at the photographs, and they're scheduled for Saturday, May 12th, for Mac 35, is materials accepted from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., similar to how we've done in the past. Our class associated for some of our material drop-offs, and residents can look on our, we'll have that information posted on our city Facebook site for those classes, but cost to the city would be a family of dollars for advertising, and we're also asking cost associated with some city equipment, supplying the forklift for the project, but again, it has been very successful in the past, and we would request council approval for the city cost and setting the date.
How many years have we done this now?
Started in 2011, so seven years.
And it has been very successful. All right, Counsel, we have any questions?
My only question is, that might be helpful for, you know, citizens, is how the pay, how they do payments, either cash, check, do they, are they taking credit cards? I can't remember.
I don't recall.
So, look for that on the website, then, well, get that information from the company that we're working with, and...
Yeah, as, as it gets closer to one month, they'll start to post that information on our Facebook site.
So people are prepared for what they have to pay.
Any more questions? If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 16 is a couple of resolutions approving construction phase services for lift station telemetry, Stephen.
At the last council meeting, I had brought forth this part of our telemetry project, a proposal for an SEH to do the construction phase services. In that, I pulled an old number of $16,000. That was an incorrect number for my construction phase services, it's actually, it should be $36,000 for that. So this resolution is to rescind the previous resolution of $16,000 and to award the revised amount of $36,000. So this is my year in grabbing an older proposal from the consultant, and the actual number should have been $36,000.
Counsel, any questions? If not, we need a resolution rescinding resolution 15503.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danker.
Councilmember Haley.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes 6-0, Your Honor.
Another resolution awarding contract for construction phase services.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second? Mr. Danker.
Councilmember Haley.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.